Work session in the City Hall shall come, uh, se- oh, sessions shall come to order. You know that in a minute. Uh, at this time, we'll recognize Reverend Dustin Hutto for our invocation.
That's right. Well, we love you. We thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight for this work session. Father, I pray that you will be in the midst of everything that is done here, Father, that you will guide the council, Father, during this time, Father, that they'll be able to make decisions that will be in your will, Lord. Father, we pray that you'll bless and protect this city, Father. Pray that you'll be with this meeting tonight and have your will and your way in it. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Something coming in. Oh, that's Mary Ann. Okay, good day. Would y'all please show them in and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our work session. But if we would, I entertain a motion to approve or amend the, uh, the work session or the meeting itself. We could put those together.
Um, Mayor, I'm sorry. Commissioner, I'm sorry. Um, late Friday afternoon, Oakley Perry contacted me via email asking could he add an item to the agenda. It's an appointment to the Jeff Davis Joint Development Authority and, um, because they've got to take it to the county and everything else, yes. So if someone could possibly be in the agenda.
I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion's been made to approve Oakley's request to add a person. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, uh, all favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion has passed. All right, it is amended. Didn't say where it would fall, but I'd say in the, uh, meeting could be 1A.
He said it.
Okay. I'll write that down real quick. All right. Uh, discussion items for our work session tonight. Uh, we have the budget that's coming out for twenty-five, twenty-six year. And then we'll have, eventually, we'll have some call meetings, uh, for the budget itself on the twenty-sixth, uh, and then followed by a call meeting for approval of the budget on Monday, the third. I believe it's a Monday.
Yes, sir.
Uh, saying that, open the floor for discussion of the budget.
Um, I have been working on the budget. Right now, there's a difference of two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand and seven dollars. Two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, yes. So, for revenue, I have four million, eight fifteen, six ninety-two. But for expenses, I have five million, one forty-nine, five seventy-four. This is on your general, uh, U G and As. Water and sewer, no problem. I balance it. Um, it's fairly easy. I was able to get with Mr. Danny Lindell to see what E S G covers and he left everything else blank that the city is responsible for. And so I was able to budget that. Um, the water and sewer budget is two million, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That is revenue and expenses. No problem with that one. Never is. It's easy. However, you G and A, you've got to remember, you're covering your animal control, you're covering recycle, street, police, city council, mayor, planning and zoning, building inspector, airport, fire, city clerk, and you've got a civic there. Gentlemen, I, I talked with you all about this last year. Health insurance hits us hard, extremely hard. And forgive me, I'm looking for all my notes here. Um, the health insurance this year with what the questions that I've asked. As you know, last year, they hit us with a forty percent increase. Tommy went back to, um, G M A. He was able to get that loan to a twenty-five percent increase. He helped us there. Even though we no longer have fifty-something employees, we still have forty-two. Your high cost claims is what hits us hard. And that had, will not clear up for a year. With the estimated cost, and Tommy was being very gracious in trying to get some information, and he's going to still continue to work on it. Our insurance per employee could possibly be sixteen-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. Per person, which is nineteen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty dollars a year. Now multiply that by forty-two. Eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. It was brought last year. And it's something that's been tossed around, I know, for three to five years. The city employees need to look at helping with some of this. I went back to last year's at a five percent. If the premium is sixteen-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and sixty-three cents, five percent of that would be eighty-three dollars and eight cents per month. You have bi-weekly payrolls. That would be forty-one dollars and fifty-four cents per payroll. For if, if you decide to go with a five percent, that employee has to pay. I will say this, and the mayor hears me, and bless his heart, I'm so thankful he don't lose his patience with me. Um, we, the employees, have got to put some skin in the gun. If we do that with a five percent increase, I mean, yeah, with a five percent that the employee pays, that will save the city forty-two thousand dollars a year. That don't sound like a lot, but when you're sitting here and you're working these numbers, it is a lot. Cause when I'm trying to find another two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars, it, that forty-two thousand brings it down just a little bit more. That maybe I can find the other funds. So, again, this don't come up until December. But if we're looking at sixteen-hundred-and-sixty dollars, that's an awful lot of money that the city taxpayers have to pay for health insurance for city employees. There's nowhere in the city of Haysores that you can go and only have to pay. I'm on rounded up, forty-two dollars a month. I meant forty-two dollars to pay period for health insurance. There's nowhere in Haysores. Now, I ran numbers just on me through, um, Ambetter, cause Sherry was telling me about that. If I went with Ambetter, it'd be four-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and seventy-four cents a month for me to pay. That's, and that's based on my salary and my prescriptions. There's information you have to enter in there. And now it's up to you all as elected officials and getting with department heads to see what we can do. Um, I've searched high, low, everywhere for all the income. I've double-checked all that, and we're still two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars short.
And what was the total for insurance for the city for the year, basically?
With the quote? Eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars.
I think we might be looking wrong into this study. I think we need to look at the provider, the insurance carrier, before we start looking at what the city employees be paying. We just get that cap first.
The only thing is that won't come into effect until January of next year, and, and...
Neither will pay in.
Yeah. Um, I took from July to December of last year what we actually paid in, and then I added a fifteen percent or a twenty percent to what was paid in to come up with an estimated figure, um, you know.
And also, does that not mean that you can look at their twenty-thousand dollar number off the budget versus forty? Cause it's basically half fiscal year, the full calendar year.
I'm sorry, say that again.
So what's your, your forty percent, say forty thousand. Is that calendar year or fiscal year?
Calendar.
So it'll be twenty thousand dollars off of this year's budget.
For instance, my premium, and I based it, it would be eighteen-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and forty-four cents. But with this new number, it's coming in at nineteen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty dollars. There is a company that reached out to me. Um, I told them that our health insurance did not come up for renewal until January, well, actually, December thirty-first. Let me go back to that, Commissioner Travis. And they are interested in me turning in the figures. The lower the number of employees, your credibility, and you know this. Uh, some people may not, so I'm, I'm kinda just putting it all out there. Your credibility is not as high as it, if you had a hundred-plus employees.
You're, 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 I mean, you're talking, you're about twenty-one percent you'd match where I match with a hundred-and-fifty employees. That's much as twenty percent of that, that's for a wrap for a hundred and fifty, so it's...
Unfortunately, our high cost claims has hit us hard.
And I have to note for this for at least a, at least a year.
Yes, yes. And people cannot help those things. And I, let's use an example. Someone that's diagnosed with diabetes, because of the meds that they take, that's what causes a jump on a high cost claim. It's not necessarily the person itself is the cost of the meds. So those are some of the things.
No, I'm referring to it's to four, uh, part-time workers.
No. Forty-two, as of right now.
I've even heard open market situation, you're not saying it's the best idea, but good idea. I've even heard of open market situations where a company say, all right, we're going to spend this. You go buy with insurance, you need on the open market, whether it be through the pathways or if you feel like you don't need insurance, knock yourself out. Or if you, you know, but I've seen that solution too. If I say, the hospital got some trouble to do that with their employees and just said, our rules of twenty thousand dollars per employee on insurance issue. We'll give you that and you go find your own insurance. And that's been a lot, a lot of questions. The younger people, of course, are trying to try to narrow it down. Don't care about that.
And it's like I told Mayor Rainey the other day when we were discussing this. You, that was one of the things that y'all discussed last year. And having the employees to go out there and look for their insurance. The thing of it is, and I, you know, I'm the paper pusher. I'm just throwing it out there. You're going to have those that will not sign up for health insurance, and we all know that. But then they're gonna come back and say, well, I need health insurance because I now have this problem. Well, I'm, I'm sorry, there's, there's guidelines for open enrollment or re-enrollment. And while it pushes us, and I say us, because we got to make sure those timelines are met, um, I can begin to see what I can do, but our health insurance hits us hard.
I would say we're looking for R F P.
Yeah.
Um...
What is our legal responsibility, though, when we have the number of employees that we have? If we let that out to free them to choose, uh, then you got less employees, uh, that you have that would be on insurance.
And please correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Travis.
You'll have to.
You give them money, they go on the open market.
Can't we?
We, I'm sorry.
You're providing the dollars for it, yes.
Um, we now fall under the threshold of what is required through Obamacare. You have to have fifty-plus employees. We now fall under that. So, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Travis. Um, we do not have to carry health benefits for them now, for the employees, because we fall under that threshold. It's a benefit. It's just like a vacation. It's just like sick leave. It's just, you know, paid time off. It is a benefit.
Yep. We already did another piece, yes. The needs are a reaction for everybody. It's just a jacket deductible. We already done that.
We did, we did.
It really didn't, it didn't really affect it. Remember the one we were talking about last time?
Didn't want to put it in there, did it?
The only way it would help, and I have asked, I'll ask, you know, I, I talk to my sisters. I talk to people that are friends with me. The only way to even possibly bring this down anymore, your deductible would have to be five thousand dollars and higher.
Have we done, have we done a dependent eligibility audit?
Oh, wow.
So, so like, uh, Mary Ann's on our insurance. Her husband works for another company that has insurance, but he's on our insurance. He needs to go to his company's insurance.
We, it is up to the individual, and I, if I'm not mistaken, I have to. They pay for their dependents' health insurance.
So that's a little bit of a look out, because if my wife can't get a letter from her job saying that they don't have insurance available for their employees, she can't be on my insurance with hospital. That might be something important to say to the city, where they will pull them off of our insurance, put them on our insurance. But their own company, they're saving money by having to throw all the, all the support in our insurance. It's costing us because of that.
Well, we're not, uh, when it comes to adding the dependents, the city pays nothing. They pay zero dollars.
Okay, that's...
Yeah. Um, but if they add a dependent, a wife and our children, the city does not contribute anything to that. Nothing. It, it is automatically deducted from the employee's paycheck.
So it comes down to the carrier, we've got times and different prices from carriers.
Yes.
Might get to better.
And I understand G M A's is good, um, G M A. I know there's other carriers out there. Um, but y'all are gonna have to tell me what y'all want, if that's what you want. I, I can't make those decisions without counsel telling me this.
I'd like to put up an R F P. Or be able to, how do you, what process can you do it? Is there a, is there a time limit on when we gotta get that done now with the R F P? Well, she's kept on using these phones for the budget. You go yesterday.
That's kind of what I was after. I mean, it's right on.
If you're gonna count these phones for the budget, it's probably not happening.
Yeah.
Cause this company's won't come in and do studies on what our, what our claims have been in the past several years. For reasons like that, amount of paperwork, by nature of one of them. It's probably not possible to make it happen anymore to the credit agent if you're using these dollars to back off the agent.
You got your son?
You... Could we not, and I'm asking, could we not take what we pay currently through the end of the year? Because we do, we do know that's not going to change. And do the budget with that, or what's, what's the best route?
That is exactly what I would, I would hold the budget, yeah, for the deductible for that because you did have a substantial price change in February. So, what's the difference? We didn't, I didn't know if it was something that I thought I had.
I'd have to go back and I want to say it's fifteen-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars a month.
Per?
Yes.
Well, I do, that's, that's fine, it's a lot.
It, it would help? Yes, sir.
So, I, I'm late, sorry. I got here, just, I mean, talking about budgets, talking about deficit. So, my proposed budget was higher due to some things we're doing with the county. But there's also a revenue side of that. Has that been, that revenue side been put in that budget? If not, there's, there's gonna be a substantial difference between mine. So that, that, that revenue needs to be plugged in there. So you may, if that's, that revenue's not plugged in there, that's gonna be a good bit of what you're talking about if you're at two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars.
And your revenue was what, going to that?
Uh, it was, I think we're going from one nineteen to four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand.
I've got that plugged in there, so it's still a difference.
Just, just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir, cause as a matter of fact, I've got, um, intergovernmental agreement, four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. I, I just wanna make sure that's plugged in there.
Yes.
It's close.
Trust me, I, I have searched high and low and under rocks and everything else.
At least you got a list of, of things collected.
Yes.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars. I think that would impact our budgets a little bit also.
It would. I actually passed that along to our airport manager, Cody White, so he can begin looking at that because there is things on the airport there. The other is where we have build out for water. And I'm just gonna use an example, Norfolk Southern. They're owing us, how much? Twenty-six hundred dollars?
Yeah, for what?
Where they use water. And, and I'm just guessing, Commissioner Travis.
Metered water?
Yeah. Well, that, all the power, uh, the...
Well, all the power.
That would need some certified, all the vendors certified, uh, that would give sixty-one.
Yeah.
Um, there, there, there are phones out there that are not collected. Um, y'all are gonna have to help push that these letters get sent out where bills haven't been collected.
We can get a motion for that, just me. Which, that, that's, that's all we're doing today. That's not, for right now, that's not impacting the budget for this big year.
Well...
Well, it could be.
Yeah, it could be. A hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars.
But what percent of it can you count and get versus what is lost?
Well, yeah, that's true. What's your percentage? I mean, if you got a hundred thousand dollars of it, it's better than a hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand sitting on paper that's not collected. And another thing that I think needs to be looked at, um, when it comes to these rental places. Um, for instance, your landlords, your complexes and everything. There needs to be an updated on the ordinance that if these people up and leave and there's a water bill left, because by law, you can do this. You can start charging that landlord. It's their responsibility to come in here and pay those bills. Because y'all know as well as I do that people will leave in the middle of the night and leave things unpaid, a water bill, electric bill, home bill, so on and so forth. There's revenue there that can be collected. It's just sitting on there.
One of our empty buildings, well, part of the reading, our empty buildings revenue.
Well, one would probably take at least three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to fix it, to get it in. Um...
I've got a proposed lease coming in next week for Dr. Johnson's.
Okay, and then you, then you've got another building which the roof is supposed to be fixed from the storm and everything that was actually rented to the radio station.
That's probably twenty thousand dollars anyway if you get out of that.
So... I, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Lynn, but someone else is gonna have to start helping push the wagon a little bit.
I mean, start with the floor inside, the building, rent, rent it as it is.
Or you're living the lease now.
Yeah.
Re-do it, whatever pays to get it.
We're paying insurance, right, on this empty building.
Yes, sir, because you've got to carry the insurance. No ifs, ands, or buts. Trust me.
Well, that's like this building here. They said, well, we need it painted before we move in. We don't have to paint it. I said, we'll paint it, put it, charge it to you back to your lease, you know.
Yeah, so...
You can float stuff like that.
I mean, I'm not saying that y'all have got to approve this tonight, but somewhere, someone's gonna have to start helping work to let's get to a balanced budget. I can't go ahead and have public hearings, but it's gonna be with an unbalanced budget. Because I gotta have those, and I gotta have those soon.
Most impactful is insurance, like this.
And let's just pray to the good Lord Jesus that our property and liability don't skyrocket to ten buck too. Cause I, I only, I went and added fifteen percent to that. Yeah. I know. I, I did add fifteen percent. That's what I told everybody.
Of course, the big problem with it on the health insurance is that you can only count that up towards the budget. You know, the calendar year, not fiscal year, so what? And this happens, so it's in the next fiscal year, the budget.
That's what I have right now. I tentatively have public hearing scheduled, um, one tomorrow, actually, at five o'clock. And, but I'm actually gonna move that to the eighteenth, cause I didn't get it posted. And then I'm gonna do another one on the, uh, twenty-sixth, I believe, just to correct it.
We get it close on time, and I did wanna throw out a couple of other things. One, while we're talking about all of these things that are ruining our, our bills and things up, um, I don't want to steal the police department's, um, glory, but, uh, and, and one of the things that we do, and one of the things we'll be discussing later in our meeting is one of the things that comes up several different times during the year. Uh, we're gonna be talking about, number six on your agenda there will be the benefit walk, fair walk, uh, at Javelin Apple. We're gonna have to have people to, uh, to basically do flagging or block off the streets. And this is taking manpower that our police department is not having. Um, I'm proposing that we see if we can help with that by letting some of our superintendents and, uh, salary people that we have that can do flagging or block off the road, uh, that is there. Uh, however, we might be able to, uh, help with that. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a case that, uh, they need some help. Uh, police department's on demand right now significantly, and, uh, and it's even a place where if they are flagging out there or they're blocking off the road and they get a call, they're gonna have to go. Uh, they're gonna leave that place on man. Uh, so that's something that we need to think about down the line is trying to help out, uh, with these things that's there.
Mayor, one time we charged for outside events and things like that. Are we still doing that, or are we...
Not that I know of, but I think that's a doggone good idea. Not that I know of, but I think that's a doggone good idea. We need to charge everything we can right now.
And we did, and that's a good idea, that offsets our operational costs, but you gotta look at the function too.
Yeah.
Now, this is gonna be a prayer walk.
Yeah.
And I, I understand where you come from, Commissioner, but I was saying something like this, I wouldn't dare tell the people I was in charge of.
I thought.
We need all the prayer we can get, they can pray for us while we walk.
Although, I hate to tell, you know, the public, that he's got to pay for some downtown or not.
And you know, he's had his conversations before.
Yeah, not somebody else, not just got to do something across the board, that's what's gonna be, it's gotta.
You're right, so we gotta work out the Kinsley.
It's, it's, it's gotta be.
Can we reach out to the sheriff, walk in and see if they wouldn't mind helping?
Oh, yeah, we can do, and I have to say, fire chief's here now, he's always been good, we had people's not busy, they've been catching when we have. Especially when we have a Christmas parade and stuff, they're good about catching intersections for us. And I thank him for it, him to hear me say that, I appreciate it.
But just one of those things, I think we're gonna have to work together, uh, to help each other, it's departments out. Charging for it, we're just using a little common sense there, I know common sense is not common, but, uh, we just gonna have to buckle down and be able to do what we can. Uh, have another one or two I wanted to mention real quick, uh, because we're getting into the time, we should be in the key. I received a phone call, uh, from a business customer requesting that we lower the speed limit, uh, on three forty-one, uh, to thirty-five miles an hour. Uh, I told the customer, basically, that, uh, they need to draft a letter to, um, G dot, uh, because that's not ours to be able to do. Uh, requesting that they, uh, the accidents that we've had that's there, and also knowing that we've got a major three forty-one project. That's gonna be coming, uh, down that road and could cause a funnel or a bottleneck coming in there. That lowering that speed, I quite frankly, uh, in that little spot we've got there, I support that myself. Uh, anything to keep away from our accidents we would have. But, uh, there again, that's not our responsibility. I, I told the group that was, uh, looking at this, to draft a letter and include the city in, uh, a copy of the letter. That we could, you know, echo it if the council supported that, uh, by saying, yes, if the city supports lowering that. But we can't do the, uh, changing the speed limits on state highway. Also, another one that we talked about at the last time, and said that we were pursuing to look into it. Uh, we are still looking into it, and that is the roundabout over Collins, I think is, it's middle school. And, um, I have talked with, um. Our engineers that are working with the roads, uh, off-stutter, and their personnel. And they've suggested that we keep it as a roundabout, but they suggest that we take out the curbing and everything for somebody gets hurt in there. Um, and, uh, and as far as the center part of it, to go in and put in, uh, decorative grout. Come out with some more signage, uh, to come out, uh, also maybe, uh, roll the strips. They also suggested that we take a look at, uh, working with the county, since there is gonna be a, uh, another school up down the road that's gonna be built. And they may, uh, want to put some money into, uh, something of that too. All of these are ideas, ideas only, at the, at the time of discussion. But, um, I did want to report back to you that we did look into it and are still looking into, uh, something that we can do that way. We had talked about doing a four-way, um, and that's not ruled out, it's just, uh, it is ideas that our engineer has told us about. All right.
And adding to that, Mayor Rainey, I do have in my office, uh, from two thousand and sixteen, the safety routes to the school. If anyone wants a copy of that, it does stay in there, the recommendation that came from G dot on this. So that is in my office, if someone is wanting to see that, I can make a copy of it to get to someone.
Getting our time is called up with us, has anybody else got any more discussion and work session that we need to hear at this time? Hearing no more discussion, I shall declare this meeting of the council open for business. Um, the agenda's already been approved and amended, uh, from number one A. Uh, number one, we're going to discuss the vacant lot, Eric Latimer and Commissioner Chavis, I believe you got that one.
So, so, several months ago, the city voted to deed the old city hall and old jail to the Downtown Development Authority. But then discovered that the lot that was attached to the old jail, the concrete, uh, from the jail to the building that Stank was. Two-story building on Latimer Street that Stank was on is a separate plot, and it needs to be deeded separately in addition to the jail. To execute the plan that the Downtown Development Authority has for that space.
And, um, when you mentioned this, Commissioner Chavis, I contacted Attorney Smith. And he said, one of the things we need to do, and please correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, that we need to get a survey, right?
We need a survey for the city hall, the old city hall, that's gonna be debated too, right?
Yes, sir.
That's where the budget restriction is, and while we're doing that, about what survey, the law, you're talking about the whole thing, there's no survey there, but.
Run out of doing it.
I think we need new survey. We definitely need a more city hall over there.
Right.
Okay.
I entertain a motion there for. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Motion been made to, uh, get the survey, is there a second?
I second.
Motion been made and seconded, is there any further discussion on, uh, getting it brought to survey? Hearing none, we shall vote, all of them favor, raise your hand. Three in favor, all opposed, raise your hand. None against, motion to pass. All right, I think, uh, this brings us to one A Oakley, uh, this is where I kinda added you in there, uh, or they added you in there, excuse me. Um, at one A to be able to get, uh, a new person in there.
I, I am so sorry, I'm a bad government employee and I can't follow directions, I really don't know why I still have a job. Uh, but anyhow, besides that, uh, before I bring up the, uh, new person, if you're looking for funding for your new business, the Chamber of Commerce. We have a, a training session on Wednesday at twelve noon, we'd love to see you there.
Do you think they could provide two hundred ninety-six thousand dollars?
You know, I think we could probably ask Bank of Hazelhurst and see if they're interested in doing something like that, so. Uh, anyhow, on real business, uh, the Joint Development Authority, and I know I've already given you the history lesson, but just to reiterate. Uh, we were created in two thousand, and that is a joint entity between the county, City Hazelhurst, City of Denton. Anytime we appoint someone to the board, it requires all three local governments to be in agreements, in an agreement on that individual. At this time, we have Lonnie Roberts submitted for appointment to the board, I think most everyone knows who Mr. Lonnie is, in case you don't. He's former county administrator here in Jeff Davis County, he's currently serving as president of Coastal Pines. Uh, he's got a real level head, he's been on the chamber board in the past, real intelligent human being, and I think he's gonna be a great asset to the Development Authority Board. The county commission have already voted and approved him, so we're now waiting on City Hazelhurst and then City of Denton.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Motion been made, uh, we approved the nomination there, uh, is there a second?
I second.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion, hearing none, all of them in favor, raise your hand. Three in favor, all of them opposed. Three in favor, motion to pass.
Thank you all.
Okay, we're getting, uh. Down to where our clerk gonna tell us more about property and lot duty, insurance bids.
Yes, um, on May the seventh, I sent out an email to three different, um, companies. Um, Swainy Insurance, Loughton, who is part of Georgia Municipal Association, uh, George, uh, S G Meds. And then I basically, uh, Mr. Mike Malloy stopped by. I requested bids for the insurance, um, for it to be here, s- in a sealed envelope today by five o'clock. I have received two of those, I did bring my city cell phone in here to verify if the other one came in, I have not received anything. So I have given the sealed bids to our city attorney, and I did inform them that the decision probably would not be made tonight. That it would be after we return from the G M A convention. And so, Attorney Smith, I'm gonna turn this over to you, please.
He's working on getting that thing open, uh, question, I'm clerk, is there a possibility if we need to get this done, uh, that quickly, can we include that in a call meeting? You got a little.
It will be, it will be, yes, sir.
We'll be here to prevent everybody from calling meetings, or.
Well, that would, if y'all want them to be here, um. Well, I think when we told them we would not make a decision tonight, they kinda just waited. But, um, I can request that they be here. Would y'all like for me to send that out?
Be a preference of mine, anyways.
Yeah, yeah, we, we need to have them fairly presented, and, uh. Let's see if they made. They'll load it up there for call meeting, though.
Smooth cut.
Well, you're gonna have to give the day insurance at night. This, um, Georgia Municipal Association, Georgia Local Risk Management Agency. If I'm reading this right, the, uh, bid is two hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. This is from, uh, General Swain Insurance Agency. Have a clerk, this looks like. We're comparing apples to apples here.
Okay, so.
No reading, it's the code.
That, that was blank presented.
This is including workers' comp, compared.
Yeah.
Is that included?
And this covers all of that, they.
Workers' comp and everything too.
Um. Checking to see here. Public officials, general liability, labor rate, crime, property, equipment, cyber, risk management. Should they did not include workers' comp?
Well, there may be a few workers' comp, I said they got it separated.
Yeah.
The package is two hundred and five thousand four forty, they compared it to last year's, bringing in one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and forty-five.
Hmm, so, two.
Two oh five four forty.
I think you'd have worked down how you would play it. Certainly, y'all will have to look at these, compare them.
Yes, and what I will do, I will scan these in and send to you all, um, when we get ready for the meeting. Pardon? Um. Pesticide deductible, five hundred, cyber liability, fifteen thousand, employee benefits deductible, a thousand. Um, automotive, a thousand, property deductible, five thousand, flood and earthquake deductible, twenty-five thousand. Equipment breakdown, five thousand, inland marine, a thousand, crime, a thousand, law enforcement, ten thousand. Public officials, five thousand, employment practices liability, ten thousand, so the deductibles are listed there. Five thousand. So they're both on five thousand.
About police. About two thousand dollars.
General liability and law enforcement liability, zero deductible.
That's G M A, right?
Yes, that's through G M A.
Zero dollar deductible?
Mm-hmm. Uh, public officials is five thousand, and this is through G M A. Automotive deductible is, um, a thousand.
Cyber zero.
Mm-hmm, crime, um, deductible is a thousand. Property is five thousand, equipment breakdown is five thousand.
But zero dollar deductible for?
That's what it's got.
Or a thousand dollar?
Mm-hmm, um. Cyber is ten thousand, risk management. Okay, those are included, yeah, so. I will be sending these out for you all to review via email for decisions to be made in a call meeting.
All right. In that case, we'll move on, unless anybody's got any more discussion on that. Hearing none, we're just gonna move on to number three. Vote on if you can, our beer wine will follow licensing for Ruby's.
Yes, um, Mr. Christian. He is, yes, he is with us tonight, he turned in the application and the paperwork, which I forwarded to our attorney's office. And in looking at everything, they have everything here as required by law and everything to serve out, to serve their and mine, let me rephrase that. In their restaurant, over on South William Street.
Any discussion?
Keep in mind, that's just to serve, meaning sitting down in the section and drinking a cold, right?
Beer and wine, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Motion been made to approve, uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve, beer and wine on license for Ruby's, uh, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all of them favor, please raise your hand. Two in favor, all of them opposed, raise your hand. None against, all right, now the motion has passed.
Yeah, I'm having to.
All right. Um. All right, uh, got that one out of the way, we'll see what we can do about number four, discuss and vote on the intergovernmental agreement, uh, for elections. Again, I call on my clerk, because she didn't go up, that's a premium around there.
We have an intergovernmental agreement with Jeff Davis County to hold the elections for the City of Hazelhurst. And we do it for a three-year period, it will, um, as you know. And we do it for a three-year period. It will, um, as you know, we pay for people that do, do the early voting, um, for those that sit at the poll and everything, but basically it's the same. And they normally send invoices over, but this is for a three-year period for the county to hold the city elections. And it's between Jeff Davis County, Jeff Davis County Board of Elections and Registrar, and the city of Hazlers.
Yes, same thing we've done before.
Yes, sir.
All right, any, any discussion on, uh, the intergovernmental agreement? Motion to approve, motion to approve been made, is there a second? Uh, motion been made and seconded to approve, intergovernmental agreement, all, uh, any further discussion, but?
Again, quick discussion. No, it's, it all ties in together. I know this is supposed to be, I know we couldn't do the election in May, in June. Um, however, coming close to the November election. And we are supposed to be adding whatever verbiage that we need for the city and the city limits to serve, um, alcohol. So I just wanna know, how far are we with that? Does anybody in particular have to be there?
Yeah, we got it on the radar. We'll have it ready. We'll be, be ready. All right, uh, any further discussions? Hearing none, uh, all in favor of, of the intergovernmental agreement? Please say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion has passed. All right, uh, now let's call, uh, Mr. Mike, Phil Michael Mango, to discuss that of the, uh, proposal for the watershed assessment monitoring.
Mayor, Commissioners, uh, in a horse with your watershed protection plan, uh, once a year, you guys are required to do a watershed assessment monitoring. Uh, it's coming up, it's due. I've got a quote, they've been doing it for several years here from Vision Environmental Consulting. Uh, the estimate, does everybody have the estimate? It's thirteen thousand?
It's in their package, yes, sir. The est- estimate this year is thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Now, la- last year, it was fifteen, six oh five, but that's because additional testing has to be done every two years.
Correct.
And that's the difference in the, that's the difference in the cost there.
That's about it, this is required?
Motion to approve. Motion been made to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. One academic psychologist, we got, we had to do it anyway.
Yes, sir.
Required.
If you read your watershed protection plan, there's different ways to fund it too. I encourage you to look into that, how you wanna pay for it.
All right, uh, moving on to number six, uh, is the Tabernacle Prayer Walk, supposed to be on the twenty-eighth. And we've already been presented that to, uh, uh, police and, I mean, over route to severance. Uh, and, uh, for approval of this, I entertain a motion. I think that was your approval. Motion been made to approve the prayer walk, is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made, seconded to approve the prayer walk, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. All right, um, all right, discuss and, uh, and vote on the risk manag- safety, uh, management, uh, insurance updates, uh, for the city. Clerk, uh, inform us once again.
Forgive me. Back in January, we had a risk management inspection. And this is the first time that they actually included visitation, recommendations, and everything else. They came back and said that we needed to update our personnel policy and include certain things. Plus, we needed to have, um, distracted driving policy, a fleet management policy. So, uh, under your personnel policy, we had to add the abuse and molestation policy, which includes background checks and annual training. It had to have defining of appropriate and inappropriate interactions with reporting and investigative procedures. References on job applications need to be reviewed, documented, and in-person interviews. National criminal background checks for all employees, not just a state background check. A zero tolerance policy statement, the general definitions for types of abuse. One-on-one interactions for, and it's procedures, procedures for limiting one-on-one interactions. Anti-bullying policy, social media policy, which y'all have already voted and approved that. Annual retraining and signed acknowledgement of completed training, including prevention, reporting procedures, and confidentiality under the, um, uh, appropriate and in- inappropriate interactions. I'm sorry, y'all, I'm getting tongue-twisted on all this. There will be a code of conduct for employees, a code of conduct for consumers. And there is a written crisis plan for dealing with incidences, including the media. When they say that, that you can only have one person to report to the media under the municipality, it's the mayor the majority of the time. They also recommended, um, the playground safety, um, equipment, because that, when they went and inspected that, underneath were the swings and the slide is, there's a certain type of material that has to be there. So they recommended that we take the Public Playground Safety Handbook, uh, from the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission and go by those guidelines there. Your distracted driving policy, uh, this will be given out to the employees when a new employee is signed or is hired and assigned. They will be given this when I go through the paperwork. Fleet Management Safety Policy. Police Department has their police management in place. The fire department has their police management in place. Recycle, Public Works, and, excuse me, our new company, ESG, they have their own, so that's outside of our realm. But Public Works recycle the other areas. We do not have a fleet safety management policy. And they have recommended that we adopt and approve that. The last one is a master subcontract agreement, and I, I was like, okay, what are y'all talking about there? This goes back. If we go out and hire, um, John Ramey to go and pour concrete anywhere, he, sorry?
You'd be a district agent.
He would have to come back and sign a master subcontract agreement, plus provide the city with a, a copy of his liability insurance. We have not been doing that, and they recommend that we do that, because if they were to get hurt while they're doing this, they can, can come back to the city, but this will protect the city. All of these documents I sent to our city attorney, they have reviewed all of these, and they have said that it's a go. So, and I've told the insurance company that this would be voted on and approved tonight, so that I can go back to them and say, okay, this is where it's at. The Personnel Manual, this will be reprinted, given to the new employees, indicating where the changes are. And they will have to sign or re-sign that they have received this. In the past, we have not had the new employees read the manual. I have given them the statement, and they have verified that they would read the manual. However, the insurance company states, you need to make sure that they are aware of this. And that would mean me taking a little more time going over what's included in this manual, and then I would, again, with the department heads, so that we can make sure that it is read. Because you do have employees to come back to you and say, well, I didn't know that was in there. Well, yeah, you signed the paper saying that you did know that it was in there, so it protects the city. So Mayor, I don't know how y'all want to handle all this, but I've gotten on the back of the ones that have to have your signatures, that it is being voted on, motions are being made, and so on and so forth.
Let me add, uh, one little thing on there, too. We talked about the park safety. That's being addressed as we talk of the, uh, they're ordering the stuff that you're talking about and, uh, put up under the swings and the safety already. So at least we've got one building, those started there, but all of these things need to be addressed.
Yes, sir, and I have let the insurance, I have let the risk safety management, um, person know. And the only thing that I'm gonna need there is, once that is done, I'll need photographs so that I can submit to the insurance company and check it off. Um, there did, they did mention the sprinkler system inspections and testing for the GSP location. That has been done and completed. However, it needs to be done on a yearly basis. So...
Yes, all right, get a tip too.
Yes, it's handled. So we will start with the Personnel Manual, and basically, um, at the back of it, this is what I had to put, the city of Hazlers has formally approved and adopted the revised and updated Personnel Manual on blank day of June twenty twenty-five in the regular council meeting, and this will have everyone's signature, and the city seal will have to be put on.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded, uh, to approve, uh, this is another one, I think it's extremely important, all those things we've got to do. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, please raise your hand. Three in favor, all opposed, uh, raise your hand, none against, motion has passed.
The next one?
At this time, you wanna start this thing over a little bit?
No, we'll do that, Mark. We got all confused. The next thing is your dis- distracted driving policy. It has the same statement, same verbiage at the bottom. So we need that one.
Do we, uh, will we also sign this as well?
Yes, sir.
Yes, just checking. I'll make a motion that we approve the distracted driving policy.
Thank you. Yeah, motion been made, we approve the distracted driving policy, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion has passed.
Uh, the fleet management policy, um, basically has the same verbiage. I will go back and add this. Um, Mayor Ramey, we were looking at, I gave him some homework. I gave him this to take home and read. And he's, he was saying, well, I like this, and are we already doing this? And it basically is going into a lot of detail. You will have to wear your seatbelt. Um, you will sign off on this. Um, I will be doing motor vehicle records, reports every year. It was stated that, um, you never know what happens within a twelve-month timeframe, because if they are arrested for the city of Hazlers, we really wanna put them behind the wheel of a city vehicle. Um, it goes back to accidents, and could they be avoided, and so on and so forth. But this one also has the statement at the back that it will be, um, approved and adopted.
I entertain a motion. So, motion been made and approved and seconded, uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion has passed.
And the last one is the, um, master subcontract agreement, basically saying that if someone does come in here and does work, we will fill out paperwork, get the insurance, and, um, have all that on file.
I entertain a motion. Motion been made and approved and seconded.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion has passed.
Yes, I have done, no, they've already started signing.
You got it, huh?
Yeah.
All right. All right, uh, finally, we go over, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we move right on. We kinda got that one out of the way. Uh, everybody has the thing in front of you on the police department number four, that's just for information. Also included too, you got a temp mark report that's there too, uh, for your information. And, um, uh, I entertain a motion to put nine, ten, and eleven together, um, for, like, a motion. So, the motion been made and seconded, uh, that, uh, we put nine, ten, eleven in, uh, for approval. Uh, hearing any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, all opposed, no. Motion has passed.
Okay, we're down to citizen comments. This one?
I'm not a citizen, but I should be.
You close it up, that box.
Yeah, so, at the, I think it was the last meeting, uh, we, I was challenged to find a workaround for our debris solution, and I'm gonna claim credit, um, but it was really the, the county, um, board chairman that came up with it. So they continued with, they engaged, um, Phillips and Jordan to continue the debris operations within the county, and the county signed an intergovernmental agreement to pick up debris within the city limits. And so they have been picking up on the, right away, but then, um, the, we've sent debris tech out, so they've marked all of the locations that are on the utility lines, so Phillips and Jordan will pick up the debris that's still within the city limits under the county's continued work, because the county has been able to pay them. If, um, the city will sign this intergovernmental agreement that the county has already signed. So I'll put that to the, and I'm sorry, I just got the county to sign it to the attorney to review. It's, um, the standard one with the reviews with some other counties and cities in the area, so, uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be signed today, but at some point before the debris is done.
It's ironic that today I even wanted to mount, and, uh, there were two, uh, that was there from PJ, and, uh, we spoke about this exact same thing.
Um, the, the FEMA projects are going okay, it's just the money is stuck, and we have, um, Senator Killery has made inquiries on our behalf, and that what GMA has told him is that what, um, this, our big debris project with six million dollars that is already funded, or, um, is obligated, meaning FEMA has given the money to GMA, has been on a, a doge hold, and we just don't know what...
I got it last week.
Okay, you got the money?
I got six point six million last week, yes, I did.
I didn't get a red alert? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I had an RFID chip on that check. I had heard that it was cut loose, but...
I did receive it.
Well, Phillips and Jordan, um, called me still this morning, so I will let them know that the money will be coming.
It's a good start.
We were just discussing that.
Okay, so now that we have that, we can do the closeout on the balance of that, and, and all of our other projects are moving along, including a very sizable and kind of surprising, um, force account debris project, um, that was obligated. So, there's money coming.
Oh, honey, I'm...
When?
Yeah.
But we'll take the six million for now, okay. I will let them know, I just, uh, talked to them for another half hour today about... I will let them know, I just, uh, talked to them for another half hour today about, it's coming, I know it's coming, they've said it's cut loose, and.
We got it last week, and of course, you, you hear what I've been working on, so.
Yes, yeah, 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 no, thank you so much, that's.
Thank you, Ms. Law, we appreciate that, on behalf of me, I appreciate, I truly do.
Okay. Um, I will, will that, will checks to them, do you need me to give you totals or invoices to pay?
They have, um, sent me something, but if, if you've got anything, please send it to me.
Okay, because those projects have time periods, so I'll let you know what invoices go to that time period.
Okay.
And then I'm sure their next question will be, when can they pick up their checks? Um, and for both of them, I know that they'll provide FedEx numbers, Debris Tech and Phillips and Jordan will provide FedEx numbers. And I will help get those to FedEx for you.
Alright.
If, if you would like.
Yes.
I know they would like, but.
Yeah.
The city doesn't need to pay for the FedEx. Oh.
Have a question. Uh, paragraph ten says, "Any other debris caused outside of the county's debris removal contractor and debris removal monitor incurred by the city, such as the city's own street department expenses, shall be tracked by the city and claimed directly to FEMA by the city as a FEMA PA grant application." What does that accomplish?
Well, we've already done that. Um, so, that means like, the city can't bill the county for the city's
Okay.
street department. And that the city needed to claim that to FEMA, which we already did, and they've already obligated. I need to do a little dance for Dory about honey, 'cause that was a good deal.
Um, I will pick up where Ms. Law has, uh, stopped. Going into information, as you all know, we leave Thursday to go to the GMA convention. Your classes will begin at eight o'clock Friday morning. You will go through class through Tuesday at lunchtime.
We need a motion to approve what we just did first. Uh, entertain a motion for approval of our agreement, is there a gun or go to the group?
I don't.
Motion has been made and seconded, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, this motion has passed. Thank you, make your change.
Over here doing timeout on me. Where did I leave on? Okay, you will leave Thursday at lunch. We have dinner plans for Thursday night, if I can find all my paperwork here, um, at five thirty. Friday, we have obligations with ESG Tempmark at Vic's on the River. Saturday, um, you have Hofstadter at six, which is at the Weston. Then you have Turnip Seed at six thirty at the Pirate's House. Then Sunday is Tubby's Tank House at Thunderbolt with Crowe Engineering, who is our airport engineers. I also received a phone call Friday that CKH, CPAs, and advisors will be having something Sunday, they have not given me the time. I will let you know as soon as I know on that. So those are dinner reservations already confirmed, numbers turned in, so on and so forth. GMA voting delegate will be Mayor John Ramey. GMA Parade of Flags registration will be Mr. Christopher Jones. Monday, June twenty-third, in rooms one twelve and one thirteen at the Savannah Convention Center, there will be a District Six and District Nine meeting. It will begin at two forty-five. I highly recommend that you all attend this, you get a lot of information there. Panelists will be included, Hank Griffith, who is the city manager for Milledgeville, Lironda Patrick, who is the mayor for Warner Robins, Joshua Powell, who is the city manager for Dublin, Jamie Reed is a council member with Edington and the Municipal Workforce Council Advisory Council for District Six, and she's the president, and it's moder- moderated by Rashonda Taylor, who is the council member of Metter. And the upcoming District Nine president, president, um, there will be lessons learned, useful resources, practical examples. That is all in regards to the GMA convention, however you will see in front of you. Georgia Ethics Commission reporting requirements. You have your forms that are due by July one. These are some of the same forms that you have filled out in the past. Please get with me so that, because this year, I will be submitting them. But if you go to the very last page, what I have printed off, there's upcoming changes under the Senate Bill one ninety-nine, effective January one, twenty twenty-seven. The Senate Bill one ninety-nine was adopted during the twenty twenty-five legislative session, moves all reporting to the State Ethics Commission online e-file system, beginning January one, twenty twenty-seven. These forms will no longer be turned in to the city clerk. It is the responsibility of the elected officials and those that are running for election to get online and file this report. It was stated, the city clerk is not running for the office. They should not have the responsibility, and the Senate passed it, that we should not have that responsibility of having to report it. If you do not report it, you will not be fined. However, after that first year, you could possibly face fining if it's not reported. That's all I have, Mayor. Basically, this is holding the elected officials responsible for their finances. Now, if you are running and you do not have campaign contributions, twenty-five hundred and one dollar, it is twenty-five hundred or less, there is a form that exempts you, and it should be in the packets. You can fill that out and make sure you get it to me so that I can get it filed for you this year. That's it.
Thank you. I do appreciate you, but you shouldn't put it in the past. Alright, uh, I think that brings us, uh, without further, I'll ask if there are any other citizens' comments? Any further citizens' comments? Um, mayor and council comments, I've commented none. Hearing none, uh, somebody got a motion, Wayne's not here, I'm gonna let somebody take it over.
Make a motion to go home.
Motion is that we go home, is there a second? That was been made, uh, is there, uh, not, 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 all those effects, say aye? All opposed, no, the best.